Like to attend? I mean, it's, that's a Saturday. Saturday. And I would just like to thank you guys for giving me the time, and that is all. Thank you.
Okay, we have a proclamation. You can come back and receive the proclamation, Victor.
Okay, thank you.
The proclamation is to declare April 2011 Donate Life Month, and it has a lot of wheresses about the wonders of transplantation. And we declare it Donate Life California Month, and we're presenting this to you.
Again, I'm Fred Ramos, and that's a happy story. I've got a daughter that we're trying to get a bone marrow for her, and we've been trying for the last 10 years. We came within three days of receiving a bone marrow from a person in Texas, but they found out that he, they had had hepatitis, so it was turned down. So that was a beautiful story, but my daughter's looking for a bone marrow. Thank you.
Well, next, we have a presentation to Deborah Waldorf, who, after 11 years of service, has announced her retirement, and her last day was a couple of weeks ago?
March 31st.
March 31st, a week and a half ago. And we'd like to thank you very much for your years of service in community development. Did you start as a senior planner and then became the director? What was the course of?
Yes, I was hired as a senior planner, and the previous director didn't tell me he was planning on walking out the door shortly. So then I was promoted to interim director and then director.
Well, he was doing good succession planning by hiring you. So you've performed a lot of good service to our city. We really appreciate it. And as a consumer of the services of the planning department, I thank you for helping me get my project through. So I really appreciate what you've done. And we have for you a plaque congratulating you upon the occasion of your retirement, listing the dates of service, and because you haven't been here 20 years, you don't get a lamp, but we do have the pen, the ceremonial pen. So thank you very much. Congratulations all the way around.
I'd like to address the council just briefly.
Please do.
It really has been an honor to be an employee of Loma Linda, and particularly a department head, and it was a great time. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Deborah.
By the way, she's still living in Loma Linda, you will see her walk a dog down here on the street.
Okay, now we have a presentation by Mandy Parks, District Manager of Inland Empire Resource Conservation District.
Actually, I have copies. I'm not sure how I advance it like that. Ah, okay. You can actually start on this slide. My name is Mandy Parks. I'm the district manager at the Inland Empire Resource Conservation District. I want to thank Pam for helping me set up the meeting, and thank the council for allowing me to address you. I wanted to come tonight and discuss our presence in your area. We are a public agency located right down the road off of Business Center Drive, and I wanted to talk about what we have going on presently in the city of Loma Linda and ways that we can provide more services, work together to really improve the lives of residents for everyone. So anyway, my presentation is entitled Present and Future Partnerships: Inland Empire RCD and Steve Loma Linda. The Inland Empire RCD is the product of two former independent districts, the Inland Empire West and East Valley RCDs. Now, we've been a public agency in existence.
Mandy, could you speak into the microphone a little bit more? Please, thank you.
Is that better? Sorry. We have been in existence since 2005. We were formed under the California Public Resources Code Division 9, and we worked with state, federal, and local agencies to provide conservation, education, restoration, and outreach within our service area. And these three photos depict three of our most common kinds of work that we do. The top photo is our stormwater education classroom program. We do free environmental education to area schools, consistent with California State Standards for Science Curriculum. That's one of our programs. The bottom is an invasive plant removal project. We're removing arundo donax from a site in Redlands. And then to the right is a preserved open space in San Timoteo Canyon. Another thing that we do is hold conservation easements. That's a photo of that. This is our service area. You can see it better. I distributed our annual report for 2009, '10 to Pam. She has it to give to you. But it just shows the size of our service area. We're 825,000 acre district, two counties, 27 cities, and around 13 unincorporated county areas, multiple cities, public facilities where we do our work. And we also work with private landowners. We have no restriction against that, and you can see obviously that Loma Linda is included. We have four kind of categories of general projects that we do that I want to talk about tonight: easements and mitigations, invasive species removal, K-12 education programs, and our outreach projects. And that photo is an example of one of our outreach projects. It's a volunteer cleanup adjacent to the North Etawanda Preserve in Mancha Kukamunga. We're doing trash removal and also invasive vegetation removal. So the first category is conservation easements and mitigations. This is our six-acre Creekside Drive development mitigation in Redlands. It sits adjacent to San Timoteo Creek and filters nuisance flow before it enters the creek from the adjacent development. We also hold an 8.45 acre Upland Riparian property in Beaumont, a 25-acre conservation easement in Chino, and the Reach 3B improvement mitigation in Redlands also. We have multiple sites. Our program is growing. And recently, I met with the City of Redlands Planning and Quality of Life Departments. I would love to do the same in Loma Linda and talk about the kinds of mitigation and easement services we can provide, everything from initial permit verification, even application, to habitat mitigation and monitoring plan creation, all the way through holding the mitigation, facilitating it. We can really assist with that, and, you know, it benefits us as well. We love to continue building our program. We also perform invasive vegetation removal. We do, those are kind of our five main species. We also do the ultimate species that we target the most, arundo donax, a very invasive grass. I'm sure you've seen it around your area. We're trying to completely eradicate it. There is one remaining patch on, right off of Van Louven, but we're having some access issues with Union Pacific Railroad. We're going to continue trying, but that's one of the few remaining large patches, I believe, in Loma Linda. But if there is any report of invasive vegetation, private residence, city property, you know, anything like that, we can come remove it for free, have very dedicated experienced staff, and it's something that we really like to do. We also perform free environmental education programs. In 2009, 2010 school year, we ended up reaching almost 20,000 students in Loma Linda. We've gone to the Children's Center, the Loma Linda Library, San Bernardino County Branch, and Loma Linda Christian Academy. That's our Toil of Soil education program, again, consistent with California State Standards for Science Curriculum. Free, our educators travel to schools, and it doesn't have to be schools. We do community groups, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, things like that, and really enjoy getting out in the community and doing our programs. We also do other community events, grant writing collaboration, public outreach presentations, volunteer-based activities such as invasive vegetation removal and community garden support. That's another one of our cleanups that we did last year. And when I look to kind of future collaboration possibilities for the IERCD and Loma Linda, there are many that I came up with, but really kind of routing me to the appropriate department within the city, I think, would be the first step. We really have had some success with the City of Redlands. I would love to meet with the appropriate department in Loma Linda about our easement and mitigation program, also environmental education, not just for schools, community groups also, anything that the council, that the city would like to perform resident outreach, water, waste reduction programs, things like that, we've done in other cities. And again, that's all free, and of course, our invasive vegetation removal. And that's my contact information. It's on my presentation, and it's also in our 2009, '10 annual report, but we were just right down the street, and would love to be more active in the city, definitely. So, if anyone had any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
I'll admit my ignorance and would like to learn more. Where does your funding come from, and who do you report to, or do you report to some other entity or agency?
Don't feel bad. They're, not everyone knows that we exist. We actually are formed under California Public Resources Code Division 9. We're a local agency, so we are controlled by the Local Agency Formation Commission, and there are resource conservation districts that are nationwide. In California, there's about 300, and we partner in almost every location with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a division of the USDA. Our funding, we get a county property tax allocation, we get mitigation and easement funding, and we seek out and apply for just intermittent grants, things for education, invasive removal, things like that. So that is a way that we're able to do so many things for free for cities.
Very good. Appreciate that. That's helpful.
So you're not in jeopardy with the current California budget crisis?
Well, I don't know if anyone's 100% safe. I have to admit, having an ulterior motive for appearing at city council meetings, that's one of my goals, is I really do want to show everyone that we serve, all of the work that we do, our numbers, you'll see in our annual report. I'm not going to waste everyone's time. I think are very impressive regarding acres conserved and acres removed, children educated. And I think that the more impact RCDs can make in their own communities, the more valuable they become, and I think we are a very valuable entity, and, you know, want to make sure the state remembers that. So the more work we can do in our cities, the better for us, so please contact me. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have our consent calendar. Let's start with 5.1, and two of us will sit back and relax. Okay.
We'll go ahead and go to 5.1. Do I hear a motion that we approve, 5.1?
I'll make that motion. Let's go ahead and approve it.
Looking to city attorney advice, I assume I will join Mayor Riggsby.
Yes, I was trying to remember. I thought it was you.
So I guess I need a motion from Mr. Daley if we want to approve 5.1.
Well, I think I made the motion. I think it just needs a second.
Yes, that's what I meant, sorry. Okay, so here first and second. Seeing no opposition, the man's registered 5.1 gets approved. Thank you.
Okay, back to the consent calendar. Are there any items anyone wants to talk about? If not, the appropriate motion would be to approve the entire consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
Is there support?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, it's approved. We move to new business, item 18. We need to designate a delegate and alternate to the SCAG General Assembly, May 5 to 6 in La Quinta.
Did you attend this in the past, Jarb?
No, but I think then this went.
He did.
Before. Yes, you can designate me if you want to.
Were you planning attending?
No.
Okay.
We can, we can make him the designated non-attendee.
If you designate me, then I will go.
Oh. Well, I nominate that we.
Is that a motion to nominate him?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to nominate our city manager. I wouldn't mind going, but I think I'm just too busy working.
Do you want to be the alternate?
No. Phil looks like he wants to be alternate.
Phil loves driving out there.
I actually wouldn't mind going either. I'm just not, I have to look at my calendar, but.
You missed the drive.
Yes, yes, I missed, no, I don't miss the drive, but I would remember a lot on the drive out there. I don't mind being alternate, because I, I'll look at my calendar, and I will go if I can.
Okay. Do two get to go, or is it?
No, I can go first.
Okay. Okay, you two fight over it. So is the motion amended to include Phil as the alternate?
That's fine.
And there's a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Reports of councilmen?
I don't have a report, but I'd just like to comment that for the public that may happen to be watching and listening, I've had feedback from a number of citizens frustrated at the quality of the picture and the quality of the sound system for the broadcast. And included in the consent calendar was approval to upgrade the sound system. So hopefully, how long do we anticipate it'll take before the upgrades are completed?
We should be done with, this is the first phase of the sound system. Should be done by July 1 with that.
Okay.
And, you know, if you, if you get concern from individuals, let us know, because some of this is generated from us, some of the issues are coming from Time Warner Cable. We resolve it on both sides of it.
Okay, thank you. So in the event people can understand me and the impoverished sound system that we've had, it's, it's being worked on, and hopefully by the 1st of July, we'll have a new and improved system.
Go ahead.
I was just going to comment very briefly on the column that appeared in the Press Enterprise this weekend about, I believe it was entitled "Sliding Towards Secularism" and Loma Linda. Had some interesting points. Not going to get into the alcohol portion, other than to point out that there was alcohol sales at the complex, predated anything in City of Loma Linda with a former, what was it, Thrifty and that license, but that's, I'm going to leave that one alone. But the, the post office one, and the recent change of moving service from Sunday to Saturday, I am a little frustrated. Seems like, to my knowledge, there's been no solicitation of the community for any input or feedback. I've also been told, although others may have more information, that the post office sent out a letter to the few other communities and, and one other community in California, and I think the other one nationwide that has Sunday mail service, saying the same thing, that they were just going to change unilaterally. So, you know, I, I'm a little frustrated, and just seems to not be much willingness to at least come to city council, talk about it, see what the community feels like, and I may be wrong, maybe everyone else has had extensive discussion and feedback, but I'm not aware of anything. It seemed like the letter just, just went out on, on their own volition with no community involvement. So I don't have an answer. I am a little frustrated. I'm not sure the community has a strong feeling either way, but I would certainly like to think the post office would at least talk to the community a little bit before they make such decisions. Maybe it'll solve itself by all weekend mail being discontinued shortly, and that may very well happen, but just, just wanted to throw that out for discussion at least.
I would reflect the same comments that Councilman Brower has expressed. In addition to that, I've had a number of people now, and I talked with the city manager about this, who have complained, and I had another one yesterday, that the entrance and exit to the new post office is right on a curve, and that I'm told, I haven't witnessed it, but there have been near collisions as people round that curve. And so for those that may happen to have an interest, Jarb, if you would explain why we put a post office where the entrance and exit is right on the curve of an existing road with no stop sign?
When they came out and started doing the work, they don't need any approval from the city, because the post office is under federal guideline, and they pretty much did what they wanted to do. For example, during the expansion, we found out what they're doing by, we saw equipment, and we asked them to put in the, the stormwater prevention, and they didn't. And so on the December 20th, when we had a major storm, we have all the mud came out, pretty much blocked the Newport and Barton Road, and, and we can't do much. As a matter of fact, they called us, complained that we need to remove the dirt, because they can't move the mail, deliver the mail to the facility, and they just.
But it was a problem of their own creation?
Yes, yes.
And I think that's the point that I wanted made. Have there been any kind of traffic studies done, and do we have any course of action that we can take to remedy what people perceive as a dangerous intersection there?
No, sir, but right now, they are in the process of selling off the vacant piece of property to the north of the, the, the post office. If they sell that off, then that person or developer will have to submit the plan to the city for review and approve.
And at that point, we would have some provision.
Yes, sir.
To address the issue.
We have a comment from Mr. Ramos.
Tomorrow morning, between 10 and 12 o'clock, we're having a meeting with the postal people at the new post office that you're talking about, about the closure of the Bryn Mawr post office. So if you want to send a representative, and, and that way they can talk to you about what you're talking about, as to why, and all these other things. It's just an idea that I'm presenting to you. But I'm having a meeting, I'm having the community of Bryn Mawr, because between 10 and 2 tomorrow morning.
Between 10 and 2?
10 o'clock in the morning and 10 o'clock, I mean, and 2 in the afternoon. Okay.
Wild meeting?
Well, they don't show up at 10 o'clock, or they won't show up at 11. They might show up at 15 to 2.
Sounds like a delivery truck, you know? We'll be there between 10 and 2.
Of course, but I'm having the people at Bryn Mawr down there, because they're being affected because of the closure, like you say, of the Bryn Mawr post office. They are, every time that there's a transaction, whether it's your light, your gas, whatever it is, every time you make a transaction, and you're going to change your zip and your address from Bryn Mawr to Loma Linda, there's a fee. There's a fee that is charged, and the people from Bryn Mawr can't afford that fee, because their income is between $300 and $700 a month. And the utility bills sometimes run with, with the city and with all these over 200 out of the 700 that they make. Luckily, that they own their own properties. Otherwise, they'd be in a heap of trouble. So tomorrow, between 10 and 2 in the morning and the afternoon, at the new post office.
On the corner.
We received a flyer Monday regarding this, this happening.
Just to be sure I understand, they expect citizens to show up at 10 o'clock and hang around until they decide to come out and meet with you?
Well, like you doctors, if the patient doesn't show up, I'm sure you bill them. Our time is very important also. So I'm going to bring that up as an issue.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think it's more akin to federal government, where we might have to shut down, but maybe we'll just pass a resolution and stay open another week. So I would, I would lump them more into that category than, than local government.
Well, like Jarb says, the man that owns the property, being that the Bryn Mawr post office being leased out or rented out, or whatever you want to call it, he wants to sell, he wants to sell, I guess, to make housing or something. I informed him that I'd rather have money coming in every three months, every six months from the federal government for the rest of my life, as well as for my children and my grandkids, than to have one sale and that's it. Because if you, if you win the lottery, a lot of people, by experience, after five years, they're broke. I'd rather have the money coming in on a monthly, weekly, or quarterly, or yearly basis. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think what may be happening with the Bryn Mawr and the annex is what happened with the Anderson Street closure, and they schedule a three or four hour period of time where there are representatives in the lobby, and they speak to people as they come in.
Individually.
So it's not an organized meeting. It's speaking to them individually and giving them their options. I'm assuming that's what's going to happen there.
Okay. And they're not counting on everyone showing up at the same time?
Correct.
But they're, they're going to be shocked. Fred?
I spent all day Monday and all day Tuesday from house to house asking them to be there because of the importance.
Yeah.
If, if, if what Pam describes is the case, then I, I will plan to show up sometime between 10 and 2 and visit with whoever's representing the postal office there and express, try to express the frustrations that I've been hearing.
Well, I am.
But I can't just hang out for four hours.
I'm the four people, and I'm the chairperson, so I'm the one who goes around to lead the people to whatever is happening that is against the people. If it's in favor of the people, I'll, I'll let it go.
Yeah.
But between 10 and 2 tomorrow.
Okay. Well, as you've all read the news, the post office is losing about $6 billion a year, so I'm sure they're just under a mandate to do whatever they can, and they're, it sounds like they're doing everything all at once. And my understanding is also they have a statutory limit of $15 billion in debt, and they're going to hit that this fall. So the post office will probably be bankrupt within six months, and then it'll be in receivership with the federal government. So you have government motors, and the post office is going back to government post office. I wonder if there'll be the postmaster general on the cabinet again. Those days are long over.
Well, I had an audience at one time, oh, I'm sorry.
Your voice carries for us, but the people at home can't hear.
Sounds good, but it's not.
I, our post office was established on January the 28th, 1895. So we've been in existence ever since then. We've had four different places, and I've got photos of the four different places. I have a copy of the first letter that came to the post office in 1895. So as you know, I'm a historian, I'm one of the committee members of the Historical Commission, so I'm interested in all of that. But my people is my concern. And I had an audience with the director of the west of this area, the postmaster in San Diego. I had an audience with, at the same time with the postmaster and over here by Walmart. And I also had a post, at present at that meeting was the postmaster in Bryn Mawr. And I, at that time, I, I informed him as to the situation that was going on there. I won't go into detail as to what the outcome was, but it was in favor of the people of Bryn Mawr. So now, what their plans of what I've heard is to put a community box at the entrance of Juanita Street and one on First Street. The Richmond American Project, which is on Santa Andrea and Delgado Street, they have community boxes. And my understanding is that on paydays, which is the first and the third of the month for Social Security or receptions of government monies, they have stolen some of these boxes, and they found them up there in the hills. So we don't want that, because we'd have to have people there seven days a week and watching or guarding the, whatever important papers that we receive. So that's the reason that I gathered, I'm gathering all the people, hopefully tomorrow, and we can come to an outcome.
Are you counseling people about direct deposit? That's a possibility as well.
We are old timers. We want to have the money in our hands. We are old timers. We want our money in our hand now. We don't want to go somewhere and you go through a transaction through an ATM, and they charge you a fee. San Manuel had a fee at one time on a holiday. They were charging you $25 for a transaction in their casino. And this lady was pulling in, was pulling out $25, and she had gone five times to pull out, no, $50. And the fee was 25. And she didn't know it until I brought it to her attention. Sorry to have bored you. Okay.
History is always interesting, and we appreciate hearing your perspective. Now for the shameless plug of Loma Linda. Now for the shameless plug of Loma Linda businesses. The weekly farmer's market, some really good produce this time of year. It's a good time to go out, good organic stuff. I've been eating turnips and beets this week. Really good stuff. If you, if you doubt me, come over to my house and I'll give you a sample. There's always lots of good businesses in Loma Linda. Make sure you shop here first. Don't go anywhere else until you've tapped out everything available in Loma Linda.
I can take some, Mr. Mayor, since you're on that subject.
Okay.
Tomorrow, we're having the Business Expo across the street in the, in the State of Brothers parking lot. 10 to 2 seems to be the time things happen in this town, because ours is from 10 to 2 as well. So if you're out and about, you'll see all kinds of businesses and, and services in, in Loma Linda, as well as some of the city departments are going to be out there as well. So it's a good thing for, for people to come and see that, that there is things happening in the City of Loma Linda that we can be proud of. So I just give that shameless plug as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Go ahead.
I was doing some reading recently, and I saw something in The Sun, and I want to kind of quote a little bit about it. And this was posted actually on March 29th, but since this is our first council meeting since then. So Loma Linda University Medical Center has been ranked number one in the Riverside-San Bernardino County area in the first-ever Best Hospitals Metro Area Rankings by U.S. News and World Report. The new metro area list released Tuesday is aimed at helping local consumers find closer hospitals and who may not need specialized expertise found at other, more distant facilities, according to U.S. News and World Report. Of the 41 hospitals in the region, and the Coachella Valley included, LLUMC received top ranking with seven specialties identified as high-performing, and they were cancer, diabetes, endocrinology, ear, nose, and throat, gynecology, kidney disorders, pulmonology, and urology. Anyway, just another example of some of the excellence in our town.
I just wanted to follow up on that. What's interesting about that is, I don't know if any of you know, but I believe this, I think I read in The Sun today that the Marietta, Marietta-Loma Linda University Hospital is going to actually open up this coming Friday for business, to actually see patients. But on a side note, when the mayor and I attended the ICSC conference, I think it was about two years ago, we were surprised to find Loma Linda University Medical Center as one of the businesses being promoted, not by the City of Loma Linda, obviously, because we didn't have a booth there, but by the City of Marietta. They were marketing their city, and one way they were marketing their city is to point in, pointing out to everyone that the medical center was actually going to have another hospital over there. So not only is the medical center well-known within our areas, being very good, but it's proliferating to other communities that are in need of medical care. So we're very proud of what they're doing, and we hope they continue to prosper.
Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to reports of officers. Anything? Okay, hearing none. Then the city council is adjourned, and we'll move to the redevelopment agency.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We have an oral report, public participation. This is the RDA. If anyone wants to comment on anything that's not on the agenda, it's an opportunity to speak up. Hearing none, we'll move forward. There are no conflict of interest issues.
Move the minutes.
Item is, and the mayor has moved the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any opposition? Seeing none, the minutes is moved. Item number two is a corollary report in the Chamber of Commerce, and a request for dispersal of funds pursuant to agreement with the agency.
I move that we disperse the funds.
Second.
I would just make one comment. I was looking at the report, and it was nice to see that the chamber is actually continuing to prosper and make money. So we're always thankful of that. Any other comments? Do I hear any opposition on the item? Hearing none, it's all ordered. Are there any reports from anybody? Hearing none, we are adjourned until our next meeting, which is the 18th of April.
No, May 10.
I'm sorry, May 10. Okay, wow, we're moving along. Thank you.
Just before we adjourn, I should formally notify the council that I will be out of the country on May 10.
Okay. We'll make a note of that.
Everyone else will be here? Then we'll, we'll try to keep issues near and dear to your heart off the agenda.
And I will be gone for, as I said earlier, June the 14th meeting, I think it is. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.